The hour of six o'clock having arrived, I'll call to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have 12 members present in the chambers and 12 members voting in citic clerk.
Very good. Thanks. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for an invocation offered by Alder Scannell.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. For my invocation, I'd like to offer a proposal and give you all a gift. And the proposal is that perhaps for our invocations, we should all just take a moment of silence so we could all just reflect in our own meaningful way, however we feel appropriate, before our council meetings. So that's the proposal. And my gift to you is I'm going to shut up and let's have a moment of silence. Or 40 seconds.
Thank you, Alder. Approval of the minutes.
So move.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Alder Scannell, or Alder Stevens, rather. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda. I would like to move up planning and personnel, Q and T, QT.
Yes, I'd like to move up planning and personnel, QT.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're very cutie.
After J?
After, well, let's do it after a public hearing.
Okay. So Alder Scannell makes a motion to amend the agenda, placing reports Q and T after K. After K, yep. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Stevens. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Amendment is approved.
The agenda as amended.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Alder Weary. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The agenda has been amended, or adopted as amended. Onto report for the mayor. One housekeeping item. Just wanted to let folks on Zoom know that the Zoom link was wrong when it initially went out. The agenda has been amended to reflect the accurate Zoom link, so if people are struggling to get on, it should be updated now. So click away. The other one, just wanted to note that we celebrated MLK Day yesterday in the city and across the country yesterday. Had a few different events going on. Unfortunately, due to the weather, NWTC was not able to host an in-person event, but they did have their programming online. Also was over at Divine Temple with Alder Scannell and Judge Zakowski, Chief Davis. Our clerk was in attendance as well, superintendent of schools, and a few other folks. So really enjoyed participating in that. Conservation Corps put on a volunteer event. Alder Johnson and I lost feeling in our fingers shoveling for a little bit, but was a really nice event as well. And just in light of the fact that we just had our MLK Day, something that I had noted for our president and vice president yesterday when we had our call, I do think it's appropriate personally that we designate MLK Day as a holiday here in the city. It's not something that we've done to this point, but I will be proposing that along with some other changes to the holiday schedule, making Christmas Eve a full day holiday, New Year's Eve Day a full day holiday as well. So that'll be coming to personnel. Obviously, need your approval for a change like that. So I think hopefully that'll provoke a good discussion on what our holiday schedule looks like, but looking forward to that and just wanted to flag that for you all. So with that, I'll move along to announcements. Any announcements from our council? All right, on to appointments.
Motion to approve.
That is a motion to approve our new appointment to the Public Arts Commission made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That appointment is made. Reappointments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve our reappointment made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion here. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The reappointment is made. Now we are on to our committee of the whole item.
Motion to go into closed session.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to go into closed session for deliberation. That was seconded by Alder Scannell. Do we have the language? Yes. Alder Johnson, you want to read the language?
Counsel may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, subsection 1, subsection E, Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating or negotiating the sale of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business is necessary for competitive or bargaining reasons. The counsel will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.85, subsection 2, Wisconsin statutes, to take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Just give me a moment. Okay, you can disqualify.
That motion was approved unanimously, so we will move into closed session. Into, excuse me, come regular order. Alder Scannell makes a motion to return to regular order of business, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. As I said, no action needed on committee of the whole. Next item is public hearings. We've got a couple of public hearings. First one is a public hearing on a request to amend the city's official map to establish the plat of right-of-way for Country Club Road from West Mason Street Frontage Road to Indian Hill Drive, submitted by City of Green Bay Department of Public Works. Anyone here who'd like to speak to this item? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this item? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this item? Clerk, let the record reflect, there are no attendees to speak to item one. Item two is a public hearing on a request to amend the Green Bay 2022 Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan to include recommendations of the 2020 Green Bay area housing market study. Anyone here who'd like to speak to this item? Alder Stoyer?
Mayor, I was just wondering if, on number one, can we speak on number one a little bit or not?
Um...
As council, or is it just a public hearing?
The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to speak to it.
All right. That's fine. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Anyone here who'd like to speak to that second item?
I have a question I have.
Anyone here who'd like to speak to that second item? All right, seeing none, let the record reflect, clerk, that there are no attendees for that item either. And now, because of the amended agenda, we're going to Q, which is the report of the plan commission. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? Items from plan commission? Yeah. Numbers four and five will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items four and five. On item four.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Galvin. Item was pulled by Alder Eck.
Yes, I pulled it. My understanding that Alder Brunet, actually, I pulled it for Alder Brunet. He had something he was going to share.
Okay, Alder Brunet.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This area is between Alder Eck and my district, and we have been spending a lot of time, including with Mr. Bader, the developer, and the county traffic and other city officials. And so that's why there's a bit of confusion. I thought she was pulling it, she thought I was pulling it, but it doesn't matter, I guess. So this particular issue, I was hoping to open the floor to hear from interested parties. I think Mr. Bader would like to speak.
Okay, very good. Alder Brunet makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is yours. You know the drill.
Yeah, everyone, Garrett Bader, 300 North Van Buren Street. I'm going to do this because this is short. I think we had a good discussion at plan commission last week Monday, and I will not rehash everything there, just merely ask the council for some clarification on some of the conditions that were put on the plan commission approval. Number one asks for DPW approval of the redesign of Hinkle and Mason on the traffic study. Just received yesterday, it was sent to staff, so knowing that we'd not expect action on that today, hopefully the feedback from that approval can be in place for February 6th. We're back here for the second part of the approvals. The second item did ask for also DPW and fire department confirmation on servicing ability for the court that's proposed as part of the plat, based on previous discussion with the fire department, of course, Matt could speak up here tonight if he wants, but there were no concerns there minus placing a hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac bulb, which I'm sure water would want anyway as part of that routing. The third item asked for, as it's written in the approvals, alternatives to the Hinkle-Hobart intersection design. This would be the south connection to the new proposed roadway. I would ask council to actually strike that one. The discussion, I thought, was very good at plan commission on how that could or should be designed between my requests and some earlier directives by plan commission that were later amended. Really few other designs that could be done there that are either financially feasible or even warranted by a relatively low amount of traffic that is there. And the fourth one was fine. Happy to answer any detail on, this is a very, it's a very involved process. There's a lot of work that needs to be done here, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from our council? Anything to add from either fire or DPW's perspective on anything noted there? Chief Knott first.
Sure. As far as us, like I said, our concern is access to that. This road segment, as measured, as we measured it, is less than 150 feet. And so that 150-foot mark, 150-foot or more, requires that increased bulb size for that cul-de-sac. So we would be fine with this as it's presented.
Thanks, Chief. Director Grenier?
Relative to condition three, that is the exact condition that was put on by this council when the council was looking at this the last time. So that's why that condition exists. Petitioner originally requested a swept connection to connecting Hinkle Extended and Hobart. Plan commission required a 90-degree intersection that was later amended by common council to either the 90-degree intersection or an approved alternative. That alternative is what's discussed here. So that was an action that this council actually took already. So that's why it appears.
Alder Brunet?
Thank you, Mayor. I know the floor is still open, but one thing that Mr. Bader brought up was the traffic study. I know that has been a concern. And traffic study, from what I understand, has been sent to you for review. Could you comment on that? Is that something that you're going to need more time to analyze before you make a determination on if that's a valid opinion of that study versus your opinion?
The traffic study was received at 9:17 last night. There was no way that staff could possibly get it reviewed in time for this meeting. So it has been assigned, it already has been assigned to staff. It's in the queue for review.
Yeah, and so do you think that that, I know your department's very busy, I know that, but is that something that could be reviewed, you know, with some professional opinion of approval or disapproval by February 6th if we put, if we delay this until that agenda?
I don't see February 6th as being a problem, not at all.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else for our guest? Any final comments based on anything said?
Thank you. Stay warm.
Great. Thank you. Any other folks like to speak to this one?
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Floor is closed. Director Grenier Wig.
I just wanted to mention that there's actually one more. When you look at the conditions that were made, walk, so budding the curb, be included along southwest bycourt related to request seven. Okay, just wanted to put that on the record that that was also on there as well.
Very good.
The applicant gave me a thumbs up.
All right. All right, any other thoughts on this one? Alder Brunet?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have spent a lot of time on this, as has Alder Eck. I've been working with, you know, Mr. Bader in understanding this project. He's been very forthright in some of the challenges, maybe things that he has maybe disagreed with the city staff on, but through that, I think we have developed a very good understanding from the city staff level versus a developer perspective. Now, it's never going to be perfect. I do think that traffic is a concern across that entire corridor up and down Mason Street. I think that has prevented a lot of development from occurring. I think that this is a very promising development and that we're building much-needed housing. It's not going to be perfect, because I won't say this is redevelopment, this is development, but it's developing an area that maybe hasn't, doesn't have perfect conditions. And so through this council's support and the mayor's direction with county government, the county has invested resources to make the Packerland and Mason interchange much more safe. I travel that daily. So what I view this being was, hopefully if this passes, then the county will continue to provide resources, perhaps the state government, the Oneida Tribe, city government, that really, when you look at the entire traffic flow in and out of that area and developing businesses and residential properties, I view that this property, this whole development, will be a big part of that. And I think it can attract additional public resources to make that entire stretch of Mason safer. Now, is it perfect? No, I don't think you're going to see something perfect. But is it workable? I think it is. I'm comfortable with waiting until the February 6th meeting so we can get out of professional respect for Mr. Grenier and the city staff to really study that traffic study, that independent traffic study that Mr. Bader arranged. So I'd be willing to make a motion to delay this until the February 6th meeting, so Director Grenier can give us his professional opinion on the traffic study.
Okay. Very good. Does it make the most sense, maybe a question for Attorney Bunker, to hold the entire item or just to hold the one condition? Is that a possibility, or how, how do you recommend we handle this?
I would, I would probably recommend just holding the entire item versus splitting it up.
Great. All right. So that is the motion made by Alder Brunet, is to hold this, this item, item four, under Q, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion on that motion? Yeah, Alder Johnson?
Obviously, I need to... Anything with Mr. Bader, as you all know, I need to abstain from, and there are several agenda items tonight that I'll need to abstain from, but I just want to provide that disclaimer right now that it's not different items, it's all the same thing.
Right. Okay, very good. So if the clerk can note that. Yep, that will be noted. Yeah, just to note each, each item when it comes up.
Yep, I sure will. Thanks.
Very good. All right, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been held over until our next common council meeting. Onto item five. Motion. Probably to, let's go to Mr. Buck.
Hi. I mean, you could hold it, you wouldn't need to. That's a, that's a ordinance, so that takes two readings. So the final reading would be on the 6th.
Oh, very good.
So they actually would line up perfectly.
Okay. Alder Brunet makes a motion to approve, seconded by Alder Eck. Discussion there? Alder Johnson notes his abstention. Seeing no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. We are on to T, report of the personnel committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. And now we are back to landmarks commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second there? Alder Galvin, looks like you want a second on one? Yeah, all right. Attorney Bunker?
Yep, just a couple of comments.
Yeah.
As council is aware, this was referred back to the parties to see if they could come to an agreement. They did. The stipulated agreement is in your packet, and so a motion to approve will be essentially approving the certificate of appropriateness contingent on the parameters that are set forth in the stipulated agreement.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Kudos to Director Grenier Wig and Mr. Jury for coming together on an agreement there. Onto ordinance's second reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one rule called vote with the, with the exception of, with the exception of number four. I think that was Alder Scannell's motion.
Yep.
All right. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the rules are suspended for those items.
Motion to adopt all except for four there.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to adopt all those items with the exception of item four, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll use the board.
Okay, you may vote.
All right, those ordinances are adopted unanimously. On item four, Alder Hutchinson?
A motion to refer number four to the plan commission so a public hearing can be held.
Alder Hutchinson makes a motion to refer this item to the plan commission for a public hearing to be conducted, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been referred. Onto the report of the improvement and services committee. Alder Brunet?
Mayor, this is a little unorthodox, I apologize, but on the personnel committee item number two, I really would like to abstain, and I forgot to pull it. Do I need to make a motion to reconsider or?
I think it can be noted. There was no rule call on that item.
Okay, just abstain if I could. And the reason is, I support this. My organization would probably be in partnership with these positions. I just want to avoid any conflict in terms of whether...
Okay. Very good. That is noted. Improvement and Services Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Protection and Policy Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Item five?
Never mind, I'm holding up on that, sorry.
No items? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Campbell. Any abstentions or names to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Onto the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? Eight? Item eight. Any others? Eight and nine? Four and...
I had a question on four.
Four and eight. Hearing none others, all in favor of remain, in favor of the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items four and eight. On item four, motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Item was pulled by Alder Stoyer.
I just had a question. It could either be for the committee or our director. The agricultural farm lease agreement, I just like an explanation of what kind of monies are realized in Green Bay with the raising of the price of $10 an acre? Is there, how long has this agreement been in place? Just basic questions.
Is that a question for CED or Finance?
Maybe the director.
All right. Director Allenbecker?
I can repeat the question.
I have this information. I was given this information a couple of weeks ago. I just, I will have to try to find it.
Okay.
It's, I think it's a realized about a $1,500 or $2,000 increase. I believe the budget is around $12,000. I think it's going to bring us up to $14,000. I think something to that effect, but I can verify my numbers.
Okay.
I believe it was $101.
Just one, one second. That's all right.
I think we were charging $120 an acre, and we raised it to $130. We've had it at that price for a pretty long time. So it was a $10 increase per acre.
These are funds coming to the city?
Yep, this is rent we receive on land that we own that we allow farmers to rent from us.
How much roughly?
The impact for this year with the $130 per acre will be $14,774 a year that will come in.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that item? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. Onto item eight.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Galvin. That was pulled by Alder Grant.
I don't know. Is anybody, anybody here from the school board to ask questions? I just have some questions after reviewing the finance meeting.
I don't think any school board members, no?
I understand. I still have questions about what they're trying to get out of it. I was, it was brought to my attention, though, that two bills are actually being proposed at the state level that would remove these tax dollars from the school's count. And that is being brought forward. One of them, it's both covering charter and private, and the first hearing they're hoping to do next week, as early as next week, and it may be voted on February, March. So we're looking at proposing this for the December tax bill. I don't know if it makes sense to hold this, only because I understand we're just getting information from staff, but it is Diana's time, which is money. So if this could be irrelevant and they remove it anyways, I, so I just wanted to make a motion to hold until we, I don't know if it makes sense to hold till March. It's up in the air again, February, March. Also, Amy Loudenbeck with the Wisconsin Parent Choice said that if anyone has questions about these bills or is interested in supporting it or finding more out about it, if you reach out to my district email, I can get you in touch with her. If anybody from the school district has any questions on this, again, it would remove, ultimately fix the problem that they're having, remove that money from their, you know, amount anyways. So it might fix that anyways. So motion to hold until the March meeting?
Do we just have the one meeting in March, or are there, I think we have two, right?
Any questions for Director Ellenbecker?
Yeah, while we're looking into that, Alder Galvin?
Director Ellenbecker, your office is looking into this. Is there that much work that goes into staff researching if we can, you know, what it would cost us to put that information on the tax bills?
At this point, I really need to reach out to the county and see what options we have. It's going to be, yes, just a time to work with the county.
I mean, I'd rather see it just move ahead, because I don't want her to get caught short if we do move ahead with this for the next December tax bill. And it sounds like it's the county that's going to be doing most of the work and then referring it back to us for us to make a decision with. And like Alder Grant is saying, by March we'll know. So I mean, if it comes back and we don't need it, we don't need it.
Right. Okay. And we do have two meetings in March.
The fifth and the 19th.
Fifth and the 19th. So do you want to make a...
The 19th would make the most sense.
Okay. So Alder Grant would like to make a motion to, or makes a motion to hold this item until the March 19th meeting of the common council. Is there a second for that?
I second.
Seconded by Alder Eck. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I'm going to inquire. Does that, does that mean it comes back to council, this particular item, which the motion would be to refer to finance, or are you suggesting that this gets referred directly back to finance on that date? Or are you suggesting that this gets referred directly back to Finance on that date?
I'm fine with saving time and coming back to council, we don't.
But the motion as it comes back to council would be to refer it? That's how it stands, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, thank you. To hold the referral?
Alder Eck, would you like to speak?
Sorry, I apologize.
Alder Eck?
Yeah, so basically, my understanding is we're holding any referral to staff until it comes back to council in March nineteenth?
Yep.
Okay.
Other comments on?
Mayor?
Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I think there's someone here who would like to speak. Yeah, so I'd, I'd make a motion to open the floor to hear from interested parties.
Okay. Alder Johnson makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell, all in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open.
I'm not going to sit, if that's okay. So, obviously there's some work to be done.
Name and address?
Rhonda Sinico, three one five North Greenwood Avenue in Green Bay. So, there's obviously something potentially happening, so it'll be moot anyway, but I'm wondering, because the Green Bay area public school district is made up of multiple municipalities, Town of Scott, Alaway, Bellevue, New Franken, among others, have, has the school district approached them about what they're asking from the city? I'm, I'm wondering if anybody knows that, or is inquired about that? I feel like that would be important. You know, why should the city take all of this on themselves? I don't think that's necessarily a good idea. I'm also kind of confused why the school district wouldn't have answers for some of the committee members. I, I did watch the committee meeting, and the questions were very good and reasonable, and there, there didn't seem to be any sort of response with that, because I feel like you were given a proposal or something to consider, but there wasn't a lot of information given to you. And I don't see that happen too often, when, and I watch a lot of meetings and have not seen, there haven't been many times when someone brings something to you as a request, and then you, as a city, have to do the due diligence. I think that's kind of troubling personally. If you do go ahead with this, I really do hope that what, what the main objective is, is to talk about, the school district is losing money, we know this. They're losing money specifically, there's, there's many reasons they're losing money. And they're, they're proposing to put, you know, a couple of reasons on the tax bill. But if this is going to be a complete project that delivers the transparency and the accuracy that they are asking for, then they should be putting other things on there, including open enrollment numbers. It should be very important to taxpayers that you have accurate and transparent numbers when it comes to families choo- choosing to leave the district. So, yes, private schools, voucher programs, they, they do take money out of the school district budget. But also, they do keep some money from people choosing, don't, don't forget about that. But there's also reasons that families choose to go out of the district as well, and that money follows them to other schools, and that's an important thing to consider when you're, when you're looking to inform the public about transparency and accuracy on the tax bill. So, that is something that, you know, if it does come back to you, I hope that you consider as well. Also, the school district, if this was something they really wanted to get out there, I firmly believe and know very well that they have a lot of resources to do so. So I would wonder why it would, it would be, the onus would be on the city specifically to absorb the cost and get that out there. Their communications department is worth probably over a quarter of a million dollars, and so they have ample resources to do this. So, moving forward, obviously if the state government does what they're going to do, it won't really matter. But if, if it comes back to council.
Ma'am, your, your time's expired?
Thank you, I'll, I'll wrap up quick. That you would consider sharing this, this responsibility with other municipalities that do make up that district, and making it a complete tax bill with listing everything on there of where taxes go, if the goal is to inform and educate the taxpayer. Thank you.
And just so folks are aware, in terms of outreach, I don't, I can't speak to that obviously, but the resolution does indicate, or does, you know, talk about Green Bay and surrounding municipalities. Other question, or questions from council for a guess? Alder Burnett?
You, you were on the school board, obviously, for a while, and you fought the system, and you fought the district, an advocate for taxpayers and students, and I appreciate that about you. Based on your experience, do you know for homeschool families in the Green Bay school district, if the district keeps the money for homeschool families?
I, I don't know specifically what, what's going on at this, this time, but I do know that there was a discussion about people choosing other avenues for education back in twenty eighteen, and there was a, a public conversation, as well as media covered a story that discussed that, at the time, it was like eleven million dollars was going out of the district, and the district actually keeps four point five million dollars of that. So, my understanding, and again, don't quote me because I'm not there now, but I think, but this is also, to that point, something that everyone should be looking into if there's going to be a conversation about, these are the things we need to know about, and this is, you know, your money's going here, well, your money's not necessarily all going there. You know, if, if the whole purpose is to educate the public and the taxpayer, then these are questions that I think the district should be answering or bringing to you, but, you know, I know that's a question, and I feel like that's something that they should be providing to you.
So I, I appreciated when they spoke, and you said you watched the meeting, so you know I had a lot of questions, and I wasn't satisfied with a lot of the answers and that. I wasn't getting a full picture, and in that moment, I forgot to ask about the homeschooling. I might have alluded to it, but I, do you think, based on watching that, that the committee got a full picture of the transparency that they were hoping for?
No, not necessarily, and that's, that's why I, I wanted to speak to it. I think it's, there's a lot of moving parts to this. School funding is very complicated to begin with, but it's also important. If the city's going to take on, and then, and they're going to have, they're going to approve to name private schools and charter schools. As, you know, specifically when there's multiple reasons why the district loses money every year, then you're, you're making a choice to kind of marginalize, I guess, to some degree. And don't get me wrong, I think private schools and charter schools should absolutely have the same requirements when it comes to state report cards, testing, they need to comply with that. But that is important. If they receive voucher money, if they receive tax dollars, they should absolutely have to do that. So that is my position on that. But what, I don't believe the committee, I heard more questions than answers. So I think if, if again, someone's bringing forward something and requests something of you, and you're going to attach your name to it, I think you should definitely have more, more questions answered. And there, there's a lot more to this than just those two entities and taxes. There's a lot of reasons why the district loses money, and frankly, they should be looking at that and spending their time on that, versus trying to figure out ways to put their, you know, their enemies on tax bills.
Got you, thank you, Rhonda.
Alder Stoyer and then Alder Galvin?
Rhonda? Thank you, Rhonda, for testifying, I appreciate your insights, et cetera. I guess the question I have for you is, I don't know if there's a number. When you were on the school board, was there a, a number that the district spent on each child? How much it is? You know, per year?
It is, is a little bit of a broad.
Yeah.
Question, but.
I have a lot of questions too, but you're, we're staying to the communications, so.
Yes, please.
Alright, I'll, I'll do that.
No problem.
For another time.
Yeah.
Alder Galvin?
Ms. Sinico?
Yes.
The, the members from the school board were throwing out a number of eleven million dollars. My, my view on it at that time, based on the information I had, was that we simply put a line on the tax bill saying that the, the levy and the X amount of money that is being asked for, for the school, is X, and private schools and charter schools get Y out of that. My understanding was that, you know, we're all out campaigning, people go, what's with this tax bill of four thousand dollars? We all have to take time to go, well, X goes to Brown County, NWTC, Green Bay Public Schools, this is really what you are paying in taxes. That's all I'm looking for on this. I'm not looking to get into how much does each child get, things like that, you know? And, and you're mentioning that the, the school does lose money, and, and there's all these other dynamics that go into that. Personally, I feel that's up to the school board to explain to the constituents. But if it was merely eleven million dollars goes to all these different charter schools and private schools, what, what is, what, what do you see as an argument against that? As opposed to the way we already do it, like with your tax bill is Brown County, NWTC, Green Bay Public Schools, and the City of Green Bay?
I, I'm not sure it's an argument against it, I just think it needs to be more of a collective approach, and, you know, they're, they repeated accuracy, transparency. If, if it's all about the taxpayer, and the taxpayer wanting to be educated and informed about where their taxes are going, then the open enrollment number is important. In my opinion, if you get a tax bill, you know, you look at that bill and you know the school district gets money.
Right.
If you're, if you're a tax hound, you probably know that some of that money goes to voucher schools. You might actually be happy about that. None of that's news, as far as I'm concerned. What you might not know is that there is a significant amount of money going to other school districts via your tax dollars.
Right, transfer students, and same thing coming in.
Right, and so, if you're going to do it, do it right. So if the goal and the ultimate objective is to, again, inform the taxpayer, and it's not political, then all of that should be on there. So if you're going to re, you know, research this and try to do something to help the taxpayer, and, or is this to help the school district? And so I guess that's what the city has to determine, is are you helping the taxpayer, or are you helping the school district? Because to me, if you're helping the taxpayer, you need to have all that on there.
Well, okay, and then I would break that down, what does the city do? How much money does the city get from the federal government, state government, grants? I mean, you know, we could go on into this leasing out our farmland. You know, we, we could, we could make this tax bill a book long. And I'm not looking to do that, I want some simple information out there. I mean, we hear a lot about transparency at this council level. Trying to bog something simple like this down into, well, we should nuance every little thing out there, I think, is one way of defeating something where we're trying to make it transparent, yet we're talking about transparency, but we try to throw up so many roadblocks, we then block that transfer of information. And I, and that's my concern, I, I don't want to get into the minutia, I don't want to get into the politics. Like you said, it's well established, if anyone had read the paper within the last few weeks, you would have seen the information, how much the Green Bay, or the state gives public schools per student, depending upon what grade they're in, and everything else. But again.
Well, that, I guess that's what I'm saying, I don't necessarily think it should be on the city to, to do that. So because once you open that can of worms, what else are you putting on there? And I'm going to go back to this, the school district is more than capable of putting this information out there themselves. And it should be their responsibility to do that. Now, I actually think it's important information, but why it's coming here, and?
I, I think part of why it's coming here is because those tax bills go to the taxpayers. Not necessarily the people in the rental units and everything else, the people are actually paying the taxes.
But did they go to Bellevue? Did they go to Alaway?
And those are good questions.
Did they go to the Town of Scott? Did they, I believe there's eight municipalities that make up the Green Bay area public school district. So if, if that, if that's the argument, then I feel that Green Bay needs to pause and, and ask those other municipalities, are they receiving the same requests?
Sure.
I think that's fair.
What do you think if the school board was to pay for this? Say it was an insert that went into the tax bill, piece of paper, and it listed all these things out? Would you be in favor of that?
I think that would actually make more sense, because otherwise, it's kind of an entitlement that they expect. You know, the, the whole argument is taxpayers are having to double dip, and, you know, it's, it's a hardship for them, and you should know this, but then if you go, come back to the city and you ask them to even take out more tax dollars to accomplish this and that, makes the whole entire argument just kind of fall flat, as far as I'm concerned.
Alright, good, good thoughts to, to think about as we move forward this, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Alright, thanks for your testimony.
Thanks.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell, all in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, Alder Scannell?
I put in this communication, I think people are making way too much of this, and they're getting way too far ahead of yourselves on this. All the city, all the school board did was send us all a letter asking to see what we could do about transparency with the tax bill, period. If, if there were taxes coming to this city, say, say this county and city taxes were put together in one lump sum, that would not be something we would want, we'd want that separated. That's all that's going on here. And we're going to, and it's a referral to staff to see what, if anything, the city can do. I don't think it's going to take much staff time, I don't see any point, and it may be a mute in a couple of months, but maybe not. And, and since this does involve the county, and it's going to come, it's got to come to us, we, and a lot of the discussion we're having now, we should have then, and then make a decision, and who knows how much longer that's going to take? Pretty soon, we're going to be bumping up into that, that timeframe. I, I would just assume that staff got the information for us, brought it to us, we can hang on to it in February until we hear from the, the state. Because who knows what, how long, maybe they'll make a, a quick decision, maybe they won't. Maybe they're going to end up dragging it out. And if that's the case, then I think we need to go forward anyway, or maybe even, well, we'll have that discussion once we have the information. I don't want to have a discussion now without the information. I feel like that's, we're talking ghost stories. We need concrete information, what can we do, should we do it? Then we can, I'm sure the school board and others will be here for that conversation. So I'm, I'm against holding this, I would like staff to go forward, get this information for us, and once we got that information, we can then figure out, should we hold it? Should we go forward with it? How should we go forward with it? Let's just get, let's just get to that point. So I'm against the hold, and I, I really, this communication I put in, it, it's not political, and it's not to open up the, the school board, the school district's records, or to help them out in, in, you know, if they're losing money, we're being a mouthpiece for them or something. We're not, it's, it's none of those things. It's simply, there's a lump sum that gives your taxpayer the impression that all that money goes to that entity, and that's not right. And all we're doing is showing how that money is appropriated, period. That's it, nothing else. Nothing about vouchers, nothing about whether they're good, bad, or indifferent, nothing about students moving here or there, or anything else. That's all the Green Bay school district's issues, problems, concerns, not ours. It's, and it's, the only reason this is our concern is because the tax bill goes through us. So there, I mean, if the school board could go directly to, I mean, had any authority to change the bill, I'm sure they would just do it themselves, they can't. So they're coming to us to ask, can you do that? I don't know, let's send it to staff, find out, and then we can, with that information, decide what's the best course. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder, Alder Johnson, then Alder Weary?
Yeah, I, I'm just going to speak to the, to the motion on the floor, which is to hold, rather than the main motion. And, and I'm going to ask Director Allenbecker, I believe this topic came up. If. If this body were to proceed with doing this, I seem to vaguely recall October 1st was a deadline to really have a decision in order to incorporate anything. Is that, do you recall, is that roughly accurate?
I'm not sure if the date was discussed, but yes, the county probably, that would probably be a good estimate of when the county would need to know that information. But if they would have to somehow pre-program or reprogram their tax bills, they would need it much earlier than that.
Okay, and so, like, look, at the end of the day, I mean, if we got some hearings in March that are gonna make this potentially mo, I still feel like we've got plenty of time. And if the director wants to place a call to the county as part of her normal course of business to say, what's the deadline? I'm fine with that. But I support the motion to hold, recognizing that we still have a huge runway here. Like, I don't think we need to rush anything, and there's plenty of discussion to be had on this, clearly. So again, I'm just speaking to the motion to hold, and I support that, given that we have so much time yet.
Thanks, Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like Rip Van Winkle, I woke up and I'm on the school board. What the hell are we doing here? It's a well and good topic for the school board to handle. If they want to do an insert, do all their, I'm glad, you know, the speaker, you know, talked about how they can do their own insert. They can send out their own flyer. What the hell are we doing talking about this stuff? Good grief. I make a motion to receive and place on file. They can do their own work.
Okay, Alder Weary makes a motion to receive and place this item on file. Seconded by Alder Campbell.
I didn't get a lot from the school board, did anybody else?
I believe I forwarded it to...
Oh, I didn't see that, so, but it didn't come directly to, okay.
Yeah, they sent it, just the way that I recall, receiving it, was they sent an email to me and a few other city staff, and I forwarded it to council.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You bet. Alder Scannell? Was it, yeah, there was a second from Campbell. Alder Scannell?
Again, they're coming to us because it's on the tax bill. They cannot put an insert into the tax bill. They'd have to send that out separately. So you have two different pieces of mailing. It makes sense to put it all together. This isn't a big deal. People are making way too much out of this, way too much. We should find out what we can do, if anything, and then if that's an issue, you don't even know if that's an issue or what the issue is. Again, we're talking ghost stories. We're way ahead of the game here. I think to receive and place on file is really premature. We have a governing body coming to us for assistance because we play a role in that tax process. That's why they're coming to us. And for us to just snub them and say, no, we're not even gonna look at what we can do, I think is rude and inappropriate and unprofessional between two governing bodies. Would we, if we were, if the role was reversed, how would we feel about that? If we needed something from the school district because they're part of the process that we're not of? I just think that's totally premature and totally against it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant on the motion to receive and place on file?
So to kind of answer some of the questions that were put out there by Alder Scannell, like the speaker stated, there's more than just private and charter school kids leaving the district, and all of that affects the overall number. If you open enroll to a Schwab and On or Howard Swamaco, they're losing that money too. So if you want to be transparent, why aren't we talking about every dollar that is leaving for the same purpose?
Alder Scannell, point of order. It's not what the communication's about, and it's not, we're not interested in doing all the school record books.
Then I...
We're not being transparent in that. All we're doing is taking a tax bill with a lump sum and showing the taxpayer how that lump sum...
Alder Grant has the floor.
I'm making a point of order, and that's my point.
Okay, so then I have to support Alder Weary. If it's, if we're only gonna look at charter and private, why are we isolating that when the big picture is way bigger?
Alder Scannell, you're...
I'm not asking for a response. I'm just stating, I support Alder. You can't, so they mentioned eleven million is leaving the district. That is three percent of their budget, if you do the math, three percent. They want us to focus on that and be transparent about three percent? That's why I wish they were here tonight, because I would love to know the numbers of how many people left to bordering districts versus left to private and charter. Because I guarantee you, the number that left other districts is bigger, and that's probably more important if it's bigger. So I'm just explaining to you, if you want transparency, you have to paint the full picture or you're not being transparent, you're being misleading. And I do understand that Director Ellenbecker, her time is very valuable. There's city issues directly that she could, she will have to put aside to get this done. And if the referendum's in November, these are gonna hit the tax bills in December, it's too late. So if you want transparency for this referendum, that's not going to be there. The school district needs to get out there themselves. They have an annual budget every summer in July. What are they doing to make sure the public is aware of all the money leaving the district?
Thanks, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you. So at the, I support the motion. I think that when I, when, if you, Mayor, if you forwarded this to us, I apologize, I don't recall seeing it. But they did give it to us at the committee. And in the resolution that was passed by the school board on November 27th, it said that, you know, I'm paraphrasing, but the last sentiments are that Green Bay area public school district is best served when there is full transparency regarding school funding. And I agree, we also have full transparency. And we know that voucher schools and charter schools divert some tax dollars to schools. Many of those schools are very successful. But if it's full transparency they're wanting, then they should have also said that we would like to know how much of our school district dollars are going to open enrollment students. And also how many Green Bay school district students are being homeschooled, because the homeschool groups, as far as I'm concerned and that I'm aware of, they don't want dollars from the school district because they want to be completely independent of the system. So when you start to accept school district dollars, then the government kind of intervenes. So I wish that the speakers had come again, because I would have asked more of those questions. I don't think it's full transparency they're after. I think they're trying to, the long-term push is to blame voucher schools for some of the loss of revenue to the school district. And I'm saying that that's a pretty heavy charge. They're not here to defend themselves. That's just the feeling I got. I wish they were here. Ms. Gierlock from the school board, she made a comment that some of these vouchers are going to support political schools. And I don't know if that's true. I mean, that seems like an outlandish thing to say. So I wish they were here, because I think it would be a good dialogue to have back and forth. I think we all support strong schools. How a kid is educated in this city, it varies per family. And I want a strong public school district, but you're talking about transparency, which is a good thing. But I can't support only sharing some of the information that benefits the school district and not all of the information that may cause people to question why so many kids are opening and enrolling out of the Green Bay school district and why so many more families are choosing to homeschool in Green Bay. So I support the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. And just, I know you guys get a lot of email, but they sent me the email on the 29th, and I forwarded it to everybody the same day. Alder, oh, yeah, let's see. I don't think Alder Galvin has spoken on this motion yet. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just received a text message from a school board member. And for those of us that want to wave the transparency flag, I think the least we could do is give them an opportunity to address this body then. And that's why I'm not in favor of receiving, placing, and file. I'll support holding it. But if we really want to hear from them, instead of trying to guess what their purpose is or what their thoughts are, or what information, or if they've gone to the other communities around us to ask for this, I think it's only fair that we give them that opportunity to stand up and say what their purpose is and how they're going about it. So I'm not in favor of receiving, placing, and file. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson reminds everyone to use your buttons, which I second. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo what Alder Galvin said. I do support holding, but I am against referral, or receiving and placing on file, sorry. And, you know, a couple of things that just kind of resonated with me with some of the speakers. You know, the fact that the speakers aren't here and we wish we could ask them questions. We have that opportunity, simply by holding it. You know, if we're gonna report this, then we need to report that. I'm okay with that discussion, I really am. But we gotta have, we gotta be able to have those folks here and that information to be able to have that discussion. You know, we are a representative body that is elected to represent the citizens of our community, and we have some citizens who have asked us to contemplate this. And I personally want to be well-informed before I make a decision to approve something. I also want to be well-informed before I make a decision to kill something. And right now, I hear a lot of questions that are without answers, and I think we owe it to the residents that we represent, that elected us, that put us here, to have those questions answered. So I am comfortable holding something because we have the ability to engage in this dialogue at a later date and get the answers to all those questions. And I just want to, because it was, you know, referred back to the motion, that, you know, we shouldn't be doing the school board's work, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm looking at this, and it says, to determine options to be transparent, to determine options. And I think if we kill it before we've even had that discussion, I don't think we're being real fair, really, to that discussion. So again, I am against receiving and placing a file, but if this motion were to fail and go back to the hold, I will definitely support that.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant, and then Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Mayor. But like Alder Johnson stated, though, we can have that discussion about other things being listed, but Alder Scannell pointed out that this communication is strictly for charter and private, which is why I can't support that. I would like to deny it because I want them to come back and say, we'll disclose all open enrollment then. To me, that's more fair. But we can't have that conversation with how this communication is now, is what you're stating? Because I was asking for a disclosure of open enrollment. You said that's not the communication.
Just a point of clarification.
That's not a point to make. That, sure.
I'll go down the list.
The list here doesn't say private or charter. I mean, the way that it's written in the agenda. So I guess I'm just asking for information on what are we voting on then? Because that's not on this agenda.
The entire meeting said private and charter, and you just corrected me and said, we can't talk about other district open enrollment because we're focusing on private and charter. Well, again, I'm kind of seconding your clarification, because I was corrected in not bringing up all overall open enrollment due to their focus on private charter, which is why I cannot support this as I was corrected.
We've got a lot of cross-talk going on here, guys. This is not how we do things. Alder Eck?
Is there, is there a ruling on my point?
That's not something to be ruled on, I don't think. What's your question?
Is this exclusively about private and charter schools? Because that's not what's in the, that's not what's printed on our agenda.
I mean, ultimately, it's about whatever you guys make it about. However you craft the motion is what it's about. Alder Eck?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I echo what Alder Weary was talking about, about feeling like this is a school board issue. And I, I'm assuming everybody here gets their newsletter, because I know I do regularly. And I feel like that would have been, that would be a great avenue for them to lay out all of the different amounts of money that go to all the different things, you know, and being very transparent about that. And it does go to everybody, whether your kids are in school or not, because I know I get it and my kids are not in school. So I just want to make that point, that I agree that it's a school board thing. And they have that, they send it out, I think, quarterly or something like that. That would be a great place for them to do it. So I guess I would just put it back on their responsibility to share that information. Thank you.
Very good. Alder Shore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Some good discussion, but, you know, like I said, with the way the communication is worded, we really can't speak about a lot of things right now. And I've got like probably twenty questions that I'd like to bring forward. I did watch the finance meeting, and, I don't know, it was a little difficult at times. I think there were more questions than answers. I don't see there being a big problem. I understand where the motion's coming from, from Alder Weary. I think that leave the school board do it, but I still think there's a number of questions here that I feel I would like answered. And are we overstepping our bounds? You know, I know we're looking at having this on the tax, you know, having it split up according to the taxes and that. And you open up Pandora's box, you could have fifty things on there. But I still think it could be done in such a way that it's understandable for all of us. So I still have concerns and questions, so I'm against the motion.
Okay, thanks, Alder Galvin, for a second time.
Thank you. The motion is...
Receiving, place on file.
Receiving, place on file. And this is to determine options to be transparent? Okay, that's all this is. This isn't about getting into minutia or anything. That's for us to decide, as it's been said a couple of times, and I don't think people are hearing that. It's for us to decide. How can we make a decision? How can we be transparent if we're not willing to listen? If we're not willing to get all the information? So we just want to bury this, cut it off, and then force them to start this all over again? Let's get it over and get it done with. I'm not wild about sticking my nose in the school board business, but that ship sailed two years ago when we decided to do resolutions telling the school board what to do with kids and COVID. So we accepted this burden, and I think we need to follow it through. I think we need to do what we did at that point in time, listen to all interested parties, and let them tell us what they think, and then let us make our decisions, how we move forward with this, one way or the other. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments on the motion to receive and place on file? Alder Scannell, for a second time on this motion.
Yeah, on this motion. I haven't spoken on this motion.
Guys, can we stop?
Okay. There were school board members and others who approached me earlier today if they thought they should be here. Apparently, I was stupid enough to think that this council, yeah, yeah, I had more, I had a higher opinion of this council, that you would not smash another government body like this. They've come to us for assistance, and you won't even give them the opportunity. Why is that? Why is that? I got a feeling some people are playing political politics here. This is a very strict, simple thing, and all those who are trying to sandbag this, I feel, are trying to make it a big, huge thing. It's not. It's not a big, huge, we're not gonna publish a book about the school district's policies and all the minutia of their finances, just as we don't, with our tax bill, we don't break it all down. All we're doing is, right now, it's a lump sum. And it should be broken down so that people realize when they get their tax bill, all that money isn't going to the school board. That's it. That's it. Nothing else. Nothing about good, bad, and different, about where that money's going, or anything else. People are really running way too far with this. And I feel it's... It's just shameful. I'm ashamed, that we would treat somebody who's coming to us because we're part of the process and they're not, and we won't even look at what we can do to help them. We won't even give them an opportunity to speak to us. And I hope that if we can get to that point, we will stay focused and not turn this into a school board meeting and go way off into all these other things. Because that's not what I want to do. That's not my intent. I don't want to have a political discussion. I don't want to have, take on school board responsibilities. All I want to do is, we're part of the tax bill process. Yes, it's not right that this lump sum should be on there as going to the school district. That's just not right. How can anybody say that that's right? How can you say that that's right? And all we're saying is, let's see what we can do about that, period. And you just won't even do that. That ain't right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary, for a second time, and then Alder Burnett, also, for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's always hard to follow Randy, but I'll try. I personally feel it's a veil attack on vouchers and private schools. Period, end of story. It's cherry-picked information that they want on the tax bills. So I'm not interested in getting in between a battle between the Green Bay public schools and private schools at all, period. They put out their flyers, they do their things, they can educate people. We don't have to do their bidding on this. Sorry, I don't want to get involved in that.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, just thank you, Mayor, for... For the sake of clarifications, I think where we're getting confused is, we're looking at the agenda that the committee reported out on, the motion that the committee reported out on. But on the finance committee, what we were considering was Alder Scannell's communication, consideration, and possible action regarding communication from Alder Scannell, that the City of Green Bay include in its tax bill the amount that the Green Bay school board levies for private school vouchers and independent charter schools. So Alder Scannell specifically mentioned private charter schools, independent charter schools, and the resolution from the school board mentions those two. So in the resolution, it talks about full transparency. I guess what I would argue is if it's full transparency you're looking for, we need to consider all revenue sources and the open enrollment, and as I said, the homeschool. And I don't have all those facts, but I agree with Alder or Weary. I do think it's a veiled attack from the school district on voucher schools, some members, not the full, because I, I don't prescribe motives. But I've seen this battle play out, and I have seen the benefit of private schools. I have sent my kids to private school, not on a voucher, and I've served on a school board of a private school for four years. And I know how these kids, especially lower-income students, are being maligned for, because their families are choosing vouchers to pick the school that best educates their children in their opinion. So if it's full transparency we're after, we have to look at all revenue that the school board is getting, or the school district's getting, that maybe they're not using to educate kids. If it's just voucher schools and it's just private schools, it's not the full transparency they're looking for. So I think that's what's confusing this, is Alder Scannell's original communication is what we are discussing. But the motion we made that's in the agenda right now doesn't fully indicate that. It's much more generic what the motion was. So I support the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion to receive and place on file? Alder Hodgson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am just in favor of getting more information. It seems like people are defining what is meant by what Alder requested. And I think there's a lot of, every time someone defines it, we're going down a different road. And I think the school board, if they were here describing what, what they meant in their letter that generated the comment by the Alder, that we would get a lot more information. I think there seems to me to be a lot of fear of putting any number in a box that says, this public money is going to private schools. And it is. It is. It's going somewhere. So I would be in favor of listening to individuals from the school board define what, what their purpose was, what they meant, and is there a way we can easily put a number down without looking at everything? Because it, it goes both ways. There's a lot of money going to pay for, say, buses, transportation, that's public funds going to private entities. There's all kinds of stuff that isn't included. We know that there's a dollar amount per child, okay, that gets paid for education. And I think this is simply taking the number of children going here and going there and multiplying by that number. And what is that number? It's a generalized number. But I, that's my opinion. I don't know. I would like to ask the experts instead of deciding right now, when we really don't know. So I'm going to vote against the referendum. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Campbell?
You know, I have one constituent here that, and a, a lot of them in general, but this lady is probably, she's got like 20,000 followers, and I'm sure right now she probably has that too. There's a ton of people out there that weren't happy with the last referendum that, where we were here. And I, I, I found it, as I learned a little bit about my job here, that there was a big disconnect between the city council and the school board. But as we get into it, I'm not sure if this is our actual job. It does seem like they are just picking this item for us to do the job. I feel at this point, making the motion after supporting the first motion, that I, I do believe it's their job, because if they're going to put it in our court, then I want to have everything to say on it. And then everything that they put across, that goes on that tax bill, by that number that people look at us and go, look at our taxes. Then, then, then if we got to do this little job, then we should have to do all of it then. And there's, there's the, there's the disconnect fixed. But is it that our job? You know? People on the school board, they need to get, need, they need to, they closed all the schools, people are asking, what did they do with all the money? Now they're moving everything around. I mean, they got their own headaches. I, I'm, I'm for receiving place on file because now I, I actually agree, this is not our job.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion? Seeing none? Alder Johnson?
Just a question for legal. If, if this is, if the motion succeeds and this is received and placed on file, does that preclude an Alder from bringing this motion back with slightly different wording?
Would you mean bringing the item back?
Correct. Because I've heard a lot of talk about wanting more information, right? Or, or intentions or anything else. So if-
Right.
-clarity is, is secured, and, and someone wanted to bring the motion back to have that dialogue, if we defeat this or deny it right now, does that preclude someone from bringing the item back at a later date?
Right. So put, doing a, a motion to receive and place on file, you wouldn't be able to put the same item on an agenda again within the same term of that Aldermanic term? But you would be able to do, you'd be able to revive that item. So you can, you can bring an item back. Receive and place on file means laying on the table. So if you lay something on the table, you can pick it up off the table. But then the body has to vote to bring it back to discussion. It wouldn't be an individual Alder decision to just place it on a-
And is that term aligned with city council terms?
Correct. Yes.
So come April, whatever?
Correct.
It, it, in theory, could come back.
In theory, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that clarity for everyone, really, so.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments, questions on this one? So the motion is to receive and place this item on file. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Request has been for, has been made for a roll call, so we will use the board. Alder Weary made the motion to receive and place on file, seconded by Alder Campbell.
You vote. Thank you.
And that item succeeds seven to five. So that item has been received and placed on file. Now we move along to the park committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens. Second, park committee. Seconded by Alder Campbell. Any items here to be handled separately? Seeing none. All in favor of the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We've addressed personnel committee, onto report of the traffic, bicycle, and pedestrian commission. Alder Weary? Alder Scannell?
I apologize. All right. Thank you. That's one thing I don't know. At least it wasn't fast.
Alders, come on. All right, we're on TB&amp;P. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Alders. Alder Weary. Alder Weary. Informational items, building report for December 2023, municipal court report for 2023 as well. Onto resolutions. Motion to suspend the rules. Alder Johnson makes a motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Rules are suspended. Alder Ek?
Do we need to take 11 separately? Because it's relating to earlier? Our motion earlier?
That is correct. Good catch. Motion to reconsider. No, this is one. Motion reconsider made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up items one through 10.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up resolutions one through 10 with one roll call vote, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Entertained a motion? Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson. Alder Galvin seconds, and we will use the board on that. Resolutions are approved unanimously. Onto the 11th resolution. Motion to- Motion to hold made by Alder Ek to our next meeting of the common council, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, oh, any discussion on that? Another abstention from Alder Johnson. Any other comments? And we will use the board on 11 as well. Yes. Motion to hold.
Okay. You may vote.
That's approved unanimously. Ordinances for first reading? Motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote, made by Alder Johnson and seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will signify by saying aye.